Good evening, everyone. It is 6 o'clock, so time for our April City of Beaver Creek Planning Commission meeting. Ms. Melissa, if you would call the roll, please.
Mr. Fountain.
Here.
Mr. Francis.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Self.
Here. And we have a new-to-me member, anyway, so welcome to Planning Commission.
Thank you.
I guess I don't know if I say welcome or my sympathies, but here you are.
Yeah, yeah, appreciate it. Glad to be here. Missed you last time.
Well, I'm back. Okay, agenda. Staff, are we good? Just the one item? Okay. Now, we need to do a reorganization since we have a new member and a reappointee. That would be me. So, we need to reorganize for a chair and a vice chair.
Mr. Chair, I would nominate yourself as chair.
Gosh.
Second that.
Okay.
I'll third that.
By general consensus, gentlemen? Okay. Vice Chair? I can't do it, folks. Somebody else has to.
I nominate Mr. Meyer.
I second the nomination.
Thank you.
You're sure on that?
Yeah.
Okay. He's been through a lot.
And we'll do that by general consensus?
Agreed.
Okay. Thank you very much. We are now reorganized. Minutes from last month. Any additions, corrections, changes, complaints? Gentlemen? I need a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes from the March 5, 2025 Planning Commission meeting.
Second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. We'll do that by general consensus with me abstaining since I wasn't here. Okay, this evening, we have one public hearing. That would be PC 25-3, Mosaic Church. The way we do our public hearings is, first of all, we'll have a presentation from the applicant, then we'll get a staff report from our fearless staff. At that point, we will open it to comments from the public, either in favor, against, or if you simply have questions. Please limit yourself to three minutes so we don't run too long tonight. Once everybody has been heard, we'll see if there's any written input. After that, we'll close the public hearing. We'll discuss among ourselves and come to a vote. So, without further ado, read away.
This is case number PC 25-3, conditional use on an application filed by Gem City Church Collective, 3440 Schroyer Road, Kettering, Ohio, 45429. The applicant requests conditional use approval to allow for an expansion of the Mosaic Church located at 350 North Fairfield Road. The property is further described as Book 6, Page 5, Parcel 4 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. And I presume there is someone here from the church to make the presentation? Dang, how did I know that?
Chair, it's a pleasure to be here. Seeing some old faces, all respect. But I'll tell you what, he was a page when I was at the State House. Are you kidding me? And he was in college. I didn't see you come in, Jacob. Good to see you. Yeah, so he lent some help to me when I was at the State House. It is a pleasure to be back. It's like deja vu. I am Rick Peralis. I am the project lead on this construction project. That's what I'm doing in my retirement. And I just want to say, first off, that the staff has been wonderful. And I know you guys know that, and I knew that. But they were working and they didn't even know who I was. So, it wasn't because they were trying to impress me or they thought something highly of me, and I thank you guys. We thank you guys for that. So, this project has been in the thought process for a year and a half or more. We knew we needed it, and we just started putting pencil to paper probably a half year ago, a little more, and we're at the point where we're going to be bidding soon, going out and getting subcontractors, and of course, the zoning application is high on our list, a high priority. I think we've provided you guys everything you needed. And so, what I'm going to do, if it's okay with you, Chair, is I'm going to have our pastor, Roz, come up and talk a little bit about why we need this project, what it's going to do for us and the city. And then, I'm going to have our architect of record, David, come up and just give a little insight on what the design is, what the building's like, and he's got a few slides. And then, we'll stand by, ready for your questions afterwards.
Thank you.
Okay. You're up.
My name is Rosario Picardo. I'm one of the pastors at Mosaic and actually, one of the founding pastors. And so, it was in 2021 that Mosaic came in and adopted what is formerly the St. Andrew United Methodist Church that sits on the property, 350 North Fairfield Road. And that church has been there for over 60 years. We've come in and adopted it and been able to revitalize the church that was in decline. And as a result, we've seen some wonderful growth with four worship services during the week, one on Wednesday night, three on Sunday mornings. But we quickly realized that we were running out of space, both in our sanctuary and in our kids' spaces and other different classrooms. This space is going to be used not just for those that are already part of our congregation, but it's to make space for more people. Along with that, we're able to be a community partner in hosting. We've hosted the Boy Scouts of America, the Girl Scouts, the Gem City Diaper Bank, which has given out 15,000 diapers already this year. An ESL group that is going to be emerging, Joshua Recovery Ministries, and one of the oldest Narcotic Anonymous meetings that takes place in our facility. And so, with the expansion, we're hoping to be a good community partner. We also host Arlington Elementary -- or not Arlington, Fairbrook Elementary School, which is across the street. They do their kindergarten readiness assessment, and when they're out of space, they come and utilize our space and use that for parking with picking up kids and different things like that. And so, we're just excited about the growth for our congregation, but also as a community partner as well. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's David Helmers. I'm the president of Architects' Association and architect for the project and also a church member. So, I just want to kind of start off with tonight with the presentation that we have. And so, it's kind of an update. We're using this to update community members and things and the church itself. So, we've gone through that already, the team members.
Let me just go straight to you.
Okay, yeah, all right.
And this slideshow is available for you, but I want David to talk about the project.
Yeah. So, as far as the project details and conceptual ideas for the whole project, we -- the new addition is about 6,500 square feet. And the current -- and that's just for the worship space. That's really what we're constructing. We're doing some interior remodeling. But the current worship space right now is, including all areas that we use for worship, is about 3,500 square feet. So, you can see it's, you know, it's almost doubling the size. The seating capacity that we're planning for is about 375 in the new worship space. Currently, there's about 180 spaces. That's in the main sanctuary now, and there's a little bit more outside in the -- out in the, what we call the gathering grounds. So, for parking, there's currently 120 spaces on the site, but with the new improvements, we're going to have 142. And that is just a little bit more than enough than what we need for the 375 capacity of people in the building. So, some of the features that we're trying to do, you know, in the design of the building, we're trying to pull everything together that, you know, because there's the original, the middle section is 1963. On the left-hand side from the street is the 1975 addition.
Fourth one.
Yeah, we'll do that here in a second. And then, on the right-hand side is the 2004 addition. So, but what we're trying to do with the elevation is kind of pull the whole thing together with this new center section that we're building on. So, now, I'm going to talk about this in a minute, too, about the height of this wall in front where the new addition's going to go. And then, yeah, we've also, at the same time this is going to be going on, the street widening is going to be happening, too. So, we're working with the engineer's office about that and, you know, trying to gather our construction schedule in there to kind of work things out. But so far, I mean, everybody's been really good to work with and cooperative. So, some of the things we're trying to accomplish with this is the HVAC improvements and, you know, with also to fix some of the HVAC equipment with the 1963 and 2004 buildings. Renovations of the two larger bathrooms and the lower level, drop-off area for site vehicle access. You'll see it on the site plan in a second. Green space for future events and projects, and we're providing for future kitchen expansion. So, this is the elevation views. The one on the left is the 3D view of, as if you were coming from Shaker Town Road on North Fairfield Road and going south. And you can see where the blue panels are in the center section. That's where the new addition is. Now, that's the upper part of this new sanctuary. And the height of that, from gray, actually, from the street side, it's like 28 feet. And then, and that's lower than the existing sanctuary space that you see on the left there. And it's about, it's somewhere about 12 feet higher than the 2004 addition down at the end. And then, the three views on the side are just kind of the architectural drawings that we put some color to. But the one at the bottom is the rear side. And, you know, you can see the existing was where the brick is, and then, in that center section where the new addition's going to go, that's going to be a metal siding. And then, you can see on the middle one is, if you're like at the north end of the site looking towards the south, that is, you know, you can see where the metal panels are going to be and on both on the sides and at the top, on the upper portion. And all the brick remains everywhere. So, and then, on the top one is the south end looking towards the north. And you can see the dark roof section in the background on that top one. That's the 1975 addition clear at the end. So, you can see where, you know, we're working with, you know, the heights, existing heights and existing conditions we have to try to make it look really good. So, on the next, this is an aerial view of the project. The current site on the left is where the red square is, and that's the existing conditions. What you see on the right-hand side are the new conditions, and we're also including the improvements for the street widening. Part of the street widening is we had to cut some of our parking back in the front. And so, we've replaced that parking with parking in the back. And also, we kind of pushed it to the other side of the parking lot along the front. So, we're improving accessibility and those kind of things into the site. Site circulation for vehicular traffic, we're, you know, we're able to circulate all the way through there. We've got two different drop-off areas, three actually, one on the front side and two in the back. And so, we're maintaining, you know, the flood zone in the, you know, in the back that's already there, that all that's taken care of. And we've got islands there for tree plantings and et cetera, and lots of, I mean, we've got lots of green space back there, too, so. We still have the two main entrances. There's one in the center right there that's right across from Echo Lane, and then, there's the one that's down by the school at the south end. On the floor plan, you can see kind of the, on the left is where the, on both of these images, on the left is the new sanctuary, or I'm sorry, is the existing sanctuary and entrance. The middle section is the gathering grounds on the upper level. And then, that's going to have like a balcony walking right out and overlooking the worship center. And on the right-hand side is where some of the children's ministries are and the student ministries, and there's some offices in there. On the lower level, there's the, on the left, there's the community room that we call it. Then, there's right next to the right of that is the kitchen, and that little section of orange color is the, it's where we're going to do the kitchen expansion. Then, you can see where all the seating layout, where the storage areas are in the back, behind the altar area there, and the seating there, the music and the audio/video station that's there, and a good circulation through there. We're going to open it, as part of the interior improvements, we're just going to open up the, there's two classrooms that are there. We're replacing some of that with the two new restrooms and to be all code compliant with that. So, that's, I think, a pretty good overall project budget, if you're interested in that. I'm sorry.
That's it. We don't need to go with my notes.
All right.
You guys have all that, so we can turn it back over to you, Chair.
Okay.
For your staff.
So, if you've got any questions or anything, or did you want to make your possession?
Oh, I'm sure we'll have questions. Staff's turn.
Could I snag that from you? Thanks, David. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Colin Carver. I'm the city planner. It's nice to see a full board this time, so glad to see all five of you here. That was an excellent presentation, very thorough. Unfortunately, stole a lot of my thunder, so I will not go over that or rehash a lot of that. But we're here this evening for conditional use request from Mosaic Church. The reason why we're here, the reason why it's a conditional use, the lot is uniquely zoned R1A. That is a conditional use, and a church is a conditional use in that zoning district, so any type of significant addition would require an additional conditional use for that. The addition is 6,510 square feet and the company parking lot for that new worship space that they so clearly outlined. It sits, the lot itself sits on 5.299 acres total. Just to get your bearings here, that northern star on this map is where we're currently at this evening. That southern star is where the church is located, and that's just current conditions from our GIS. You already saw that. Couple of things I just wanted to outline here. They did a great job outlining the exterior design. It is, it does stand 28 feet tall. The height limit for R1A for homes is 35 feet, so they are under that, and they are mirroring kind of the existing conditions of their existing worship center. We think that, from a staff's perspective, we think there is a nice, modern touch to this addition that kind of contrasts with kind of the older brick buildings that are currently present on the lot there. You've already seen these, but it's just another look at those architectural designs. Once again, two access points, that is not changing. The one thing that I did want to highlight here, so the way we look at parking specifically looks at the sanctuary space to determine that number. As they pointed out, they're expecting to seat 372 people in this new space. That would require 124 spaces total, including the, including the parking that they would be losing, and I believe that that project will be starting in October, the North Fairfield expansion. They will, we're estimating they'll be losing about 30 spaces there. So, currently, it is around 171 spaces. That'll be knocking down to 141, 142 spaces. As you can see, that's well above the 124 that's required here, and staff is comfortable with where, with the parking that they're providing and just some added, I guess, added better flow to the, it wasn't fully connected with the addition, but now that the parking lot will fully encompass the entire building, so it'll increase flow in the parking lot And this is just, I think this went out with a lot of the Planning Commission packets, and it might have led to a little confusion here, but that would be the existing conditions prior to that North Fairfield Road expansion. You can see on that western part of that, of the map, those spaces that kind of have that dashed line there. That's indicating that those are going to be lost. So, that line of spaces on that western property line are the spaces that we're indicating will be lost. And just some final clarifying points that I'm sure people might have had questions on, but the size of this expansion, with working with our engineering team, they didn't think that that warranted new storm water management for the area or providing new calculations, so wanted to make that clear. We are requiring a photometric plan to be submitted prior to me releasing the zoning permit. They are not in those various landscaped islands in their proposal. They're not, there will not be kind of standing pole lights at all. Any additional lighting will be on the addition itself, but we will make sure that, from the photometric plan, that none of the adjoining neighbors would be affected by glare there. And as well as staff will be requiring a final landscape plan, indicating kind of what's going on around the addition as well as in those landscape islands. Those will be, a bond will be taken out to ensure that that, the new plantings will survive a three-year life cycle as well. So, that's pretty much all I have. Like I said, I didn't want to rehash a lot of what was already presented, but staff is recommending approval here, subject to the seven conditions that are outlined in your staff report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our usual very comprehensive report from staff. Thanks. Okay, public hearing time. If you would like to come forward and speak, step right on up, give us your name and your address, and have at it for three minutes.
[inaudible]
If you would, just go ahead and come on up here. We're on the air, and they won't be able to hear you otherwise. Just tell us your name and address, and have at it.
Hi, I'm David McKenna, 3418 Arlington Place. So, I'm your neighbor. So, the clarification is you said that it was 6,500 foot, square foot addition?
Yes, sir.
I thought the other gentleman presented it was 3,500 square foot.
That's existing.
So, what's the total square foot? It's going to be a thousand? 10,000?
It's going to add on to 6,500.
It's going to be 10,000 square feet.
No. The building addition will be just about 6,500 square feet. What we're doing is running a comparison between the new.
You need to, you need to come up to the mic, if you would, please.
Yeah, what we were trying to accomplish with that, with those numbers, was the new addition is 6,500 square feet.
It's the orange up there.
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah, the orange part is 6,500 square feet. That's the addition.
The part north of that was the old sanctuary. The part north of that was the old sanctuary, and that was 3,500 square feet.
That's right.
They're contrasting the size of the existing sanctuary with the new one, is what they're doing.
Okay. So, it's like an additional?
Correct.
That is correct.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
It's actually additional 6,000. Or additional 3 from that, but from existing, it's an additional 3.
Okay. Could I use your slide of the aerial view?
If you would, you need to be a little closer to the mic, because folks.
Could I see the slide of the aerial view? Believe me, I can talk loud. That's not right there. Nope. Yeah, that was okay. That's okay. That was different than I saw before. Okay.
That's existing.
That's the current aerial.
Okay. So, this is where our church is.
You need to, you need to be, yeah, you need to talk to the mic.
This is where the church is. There is a brook or a creek that runs down in between Plantation and Arlington. This is where we live. That brook overflows significantly, sometimes up to, right to our back door. We are currently about a foot outside of the 100-year flood plain. I'm not sure of what your requirements are for a storm water evaluation, but I would think anything being done upstream of that should at least have that evaluated. Number two, back in 2008, we had 13 inches of rain in the month of April. Everybody on the north side of Arlington Place had their storm, their sewer systems back up into their house. We ourselves had over $50,000 worth of damage, so we're very concerned about anything being done upstream of our homes. According to Green County, and I got a lot of answers why that happened, but it's a problem with storm water getting into the sewer system that increases the pressure and everything backs up. This is not something that we desire to have happen again. Anybody would like more details, I'd be happy to provide you with them. So, those are concerns that we have. I think that having an evaluation of how that's going to affect the water in the creek and any other storm water would be appropriate. On the initial plan that I saw on the website, there was a retaining pond. I don't see that now.
There is an existing retaining basin, and it's right in this area right here. We didn't show it here, but it is, I'll show it to you on the photograph. Yeah, that's on, even if that photograph, you brought that same photograph that was up on there. There, there we go, right here. You can see the depression in the ground right here. That's where the existing detention pond is.
It's going to be a change.
Yeah, and that was designed back when, in 2002, when the church regraded all this and brought the, and where it, you know, it, I'm not sure how to say this, but it improved the flood plain. Instead of coming up in here, it stays right in this area right here. And that was based on 100-year flood.
Okay, thank you. So, I guess the way I understand is that's there in order to address your flood plain or your flood issues.
We got all of our information from the FEMA maps, and the FEMA map was just recently, it just changed, because it was, to our understanding, there was upstream work that was done that helped improve all this also. And so, everything we're doing is based on the FEMA maps and the required elevations for the flood plain, for the water level. So, and everything that is here now is still in compliance with all of that.
Okay. Yeah, no, I understand that. My question still is, my yard is one foot. I'm very familiar with the FEMA maps.
We do have, we do have the city engineer here, so we'll address that.
Okay.
If you would.
All right, great. Because, you know, with, I mean, I think this looks like a wonderful proposal. I just don't want sewage backing up in my basement again, and we don't want to be in the flood plain either. You know, the, and the concern that goes along with that is the increased parking is going to affect water flow because it's replacing green space, so that water's going to run off as opposed to be absorbed. I'm not an, actually, I am an engineer, but not that type. Okay, so, just bear with me for a second. I want to make sure I caught everything here. My wife wanted me to mention the noise from the outdoor services. You need a new speaker and probably need to limit when that's going on. The reason why I mention that, and I bring it up is that we can have more people, we just want to know if that's going to be more frequent and longer hours. But in the past, there are events outdoors with a speaker that distorts at least, and but we can hear it, it's quite loud all the way down our street. So, we just want that to be brought up, and hopefully, that's not going to be an issue. And, yep, that's all that I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, be sure and put the mic back. Thanks.
I won't take it home.
Okay, other folks that wish to speak? Don't be shy. Boy, I got a bunch of people here, and nobody wants to talk. I bet you're all in favor of it. Last chance for the public hearing? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask Ms. Melissa if we had any written input.
We did receive written input. Staff received 16 emails, and the commission received a copy of each of those.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, gentlemen, it's our turn, and I'm going to start, I'm going to start with our new guy. Put him on the spot.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a number of questions. Let me first, my apologies, we did not get many of the slides you showed. Let me first, my apologies, we did not get many of the slides you showed, so I'm going to have to ask you to come up so I can have your presentation come up again.
Can the three of us come up and it'll be easier? We can just answer.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
All my questions relate to usage of the proposed building, the addition. So who would I address a how it's going to be used activity type of questions to?
So because this is multipurpose, it'll be used for worship.
Okay, can I, my apologies. Again, we didn't get your information, so, and you said your name really quick and I didn't, I was trying to write it down. So can you tell me your name again, sir?
My name is Rosario Picardo, one of the pastors.
Rosario Picardo, Mr. Picardo, thank you very much. So, Mr. Picardo, when that building, assuming it's constructed, how often do you expect that to be used to add or near your capacity?
I mean, with any kind of service, you, I mean, we are not meeting that kind of capacity as of right now, so I don't foresee us meeting that capacity day one or anything near that size. So we, the reason why we chose that number is because we didn't want to overbuild. So we feel like that would be comparable to cut down on the amount of four services that we're doing right now.
So when, I think if I recall, one of your slides said the capacity was up to 372 worshippers, correct?
Right.
So you don't anticipate nearing that mark anytime in next year?
In one, not in one service anytime in the, I mean, I can't forecast. I mean, any, any church would love to have that problem, but I, I don't, I don't, I don't foresee that happening right away if anytime. I mean, it would happen probably holidays and it would be.
Okay.
Very, you know, and even then we would have a few worship opportunities. So we have a 9:15 and 11 o'clock, so.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, my, my interest is solely to when you see that 372 being approached, not at all.
Not at one time. No, not at one time.
So I, I have another question. We did not see your, I'll call it the floor plans. Can you on your presentations call up the floor plan slide? So on that slide there, it's my understanding, if I recall what, what did we two gentlemen said? You talked about a kitchen area and obviously the main seating area. Where would people enter an egress during, even if it's not going to be 372, where would people ingress and egress most of the time? Most of the people, I should say, coming into and out of the new addition? Would they go through the old way? Go through the former St. Andrews way? Go through the North Fairfield way? Where would most of these 100-plus people come into the facility from?
Well, we've, we're going to have four entrances now, but they're.
I'm thinking quantity because you were kind enough to show us parking lots all the way around on all four sides. So that gives people the opportunity to park on all four sides. I'm really curious as to where most people you think will walk into the building.
I think the great majority of them are going to come right through here.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And you are Mr.?
David Helmers.
Helmers, thank you, sir. And then the, the last question I had before I call Mr. Carville up, on the upper left, there was a kitchen area in that?
It's in that tree on the, one on the right. Yeah, it's.
Right there. So.
There's the line of the current kitchen.
Okay.
And expand that by roughly 100.
So delivery trucks, I've been to the site a number of times, so that's why I'm asking these questions. Your delivery trucks, food delivery, what have you, catering, seating, tableing, they are going to be coming and egressing and parking in that nodule where Commissioner Meyer showed us a moment ago, right?
The site plan would be a good drawing to have up right now to show you where that is. I mean, this sidewalk right here, it's fully just directly into that building and there's a drop-off place which is right here.
Okay. So right now you're still expecting delivery trucks to? I think our tech support has arrived. But delivery, pretty much where, because I know where it goes now, but that would be pretty much, okay, thank you. All right. Do we want to, before I call Mr. Carville up? Thank you. That was all of my questions for the applicants. Thank you, though. I greatly appreciate it. Those are great slides. I would have liked to have seen them. Do we want to wait for a microphone or?
Yeah.
Assuming that works. Colin, can you come back up there? So I got, we can leave this one up. So a couple of questions I have on handicap. Knowing the fine motion of the, the church, they currently have, I believe, five, or excuse me, eight handicap spaces well within the Ohio limits for the number of spaces. Assuming North Fairfield goes through on schedule, they'll get down to five spaces. And if I recall that plan, it shows two of the five spaces on the North Fairfield side, three of the five spaces on the interior new parking lot side.
Sure.
And knowing handicap is usually meant to support people ingressing and egressing into a facility, I'm wondering, do we have any restrictions or requirements of the placement of the handicap spots, knowing that the majority of the people, including the handicap, will not be coming from where the handicap spaces are into the building?
Yeah, that would be something, that's not really a standard that the city has. It's more of an ADA standard that we'd, we'd have to enforce. I'd be happy to relook at that.
Well, that's, I know we're going to get to the parking layout at the point it comes to your department's approval.
Right.
But going with the state of Ohio's ADA requirements, I became concerned especially as we lose handicap spots with North Fairfield, if the ones that people are going to need are the farthest from getting into the building.
Sure.
They're the ones that need to help the most.
Yeah.
And that'll be addressed at the site plan stage, correct?
This is.
This is the site plan stage.
Site plan stage, sorry.
Yeah. So that was why I wanted to ask about the activity of the building. If the building is going to be used with large quantities of people and people are coming in through their rear entrances, the handicap people are going to be put into an undue hindrance if their spots are kept on the North Fairfield side.
Certainly understand that concern, yep.
So that was one question. So that's something we'll be resolving in the future.
Absolutely.
And the other, going back to Mr. McKenna and what he said, I noticed it myself, we have the existing catch basin. If you could go to the site plan or the aerial photo, either one.
Yeah.
Anyway, there, in the upper right-hand corner is that catch basin and then you have the detention pond, as the architect talked about. My concern is that that will be capacity-wise able to handle the increased hardscape and everything that's going to be added with the increased parking spot, increased parking lot space, especially for what Mr. McKenna was talking about. Do we take in hardscape space into, knowing if its existing capacity is adequate?
Sure, I'm, I'm sure Jeff can, Jeff can speak to it, but he was, he, he looked at the proposal and was comfortable with.
Okay.
With what was being proposed and what was already preexisting to handle that.
Mr. Mormon, I hate to bring you up for one quick question, but I forgot the schedule of the North Fairfield. What's the timing on that expansion addition? For that section of North Fairfield?
Sure. You might have noticed some activity out there recently. What that is, is we have to relocate multiple utilities to make room for the road widening work. So that's all AES and Center Point, other utilities moving their stuff currently. We, we opened bids on the project next week, but it's looking like things won't get rolling until the, the fall, October-ish of this year. The reason for that being is there's a endangered species of bat. So we're, we're, we're actually prohibited from cutting trees between April 1st and October 1st.
So the lost in, I hate to be so granular, but the loss of all those parking spaces and handicap spaces along North Fairfield probably will not occur until late fall, end of year?
That's correct. It's part of the, the first phase of the work. Part of that phase one is to take out those parking spaces, which I would anticipate that being October timeframe.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Yes, that concludes my questions, Mr. Chairman. My biggest focus was on handicap access and are we really providing handicap access to the handicap in a way that facilitates them? I'm not really sure about that.
Thank you.
But I did want to raise it.
I didn't want you to sit down. Just real quick, I've just got one question. What's the mechanism by which there's some assurance that we won't stress the drainage to the point where some of the surrounding residents have flooding in their yards or even basements?
Well, I know in our zoning code, we, any, you know, any additions, we, we, we limit making things worse than we found it, right? So that, I, I, I am confident that our engineering team, when, when determining that, we don't need to expand those, looked at that, that, those standards and followed through with that, so.
Okay. All right, that's the only question I had.
Great.
So it wasn't clear on the plans, does a new parking lot drain into that, like detention pond?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, that's, that's the intention.
I didn't see anything in the conditions about like a construct, hours of construction on the exterior. We often do that when there's like residential neighborhoods nearby.
It's a great point. Would be welcome to, to hear a condition added for that.
Okay.
Just so you know, within our specs, we put seven to seven.
Okay, yeah.
Pretty reasonable.
Yeah, that's what we typically do, seven to seven.
Great.
And then just a question on the timing of like the, the road construction versus when this project would happen? Because it looks like they're, right, they're shifting the parking spots in the front, right? Because currently they're on the left side of this picture.
Right.
And then they're going to the right. So will that be done in conjunction? What's the timing of all that?
Go ahead.
The way it looks for us, we won't even begin construction till midsummer. So we won't have that done. We'll, we'll be in the middle of some dirt work for sure. And hopefully we can get some things done before the winter months come in. But right now the project's being delayed. The, the construction climate, we got bad bids, so we're kind of back at the drawing table trying to figure things out. But I will say that your guys have been wonderful in coordinating that project to date with us for the current activities and we intend on keeping that relationship.
Great, okay. So just a question on that. So is there any concern from staff about like the number of parking spaces? Because essentially you'd lose all those parking spots, right?
Yeah, it'll, it'll certainly make, I think, for tight conditions currently with their current setup, but there's unfortunately nothing we can really do about that.
If I can, if I can.
Go ahead.
We have a relationship with the school just to the south, so we'll, we'll, they're not working during Sundays, of course, so we'll do all the overflow. We have a reciprocal agreement with them, so I think we can take care of that.
Okay, no, that's a great idea. And then one more question, I think. Was there any, so I know you said there's no lights in the islands that are planned.
Yes.
So was there any discussion on that? Because, so I went back and looked at a lot of our cases and it was every case we put at least some lights in the islands, you know, just for safety, security type of thing.
Sure.
So.
Not, not much discussion. That was kind of their personal preference and staff was okay with, with what they were proposing.
Okay. Just a question to you guys, the applicant. What's the reasoning for not wanting to do any lights in the parking lot at all?
One of the reasons is cost. The other reason is we, we felt that if we put it on the back wall of the building, there's going to be like three on the, on the south part, the south wing, and then three on the, the new part, and I think two on the, on the, the northern part, and maybe a couple on the side. So I, we, we were feeling like the security that we would like to really have is mainly around the building. There's not a lot of people there late at night, but it's more for, you know, other concerns, actually.
And let me say, Mr. Chair, we are also concerned about our neighbors. So that's going to be less impact for them. As a matter of fact, we talked to them yesterday, we had an open, yesterday? Open house. And we're going to put a tree line on the north side in front of their houses to try to minimize light and sound and whatever.
Okay, all right. I think that's all I had, thank you.
Question for staff. Mr. Meyer took most of my questions, but I did have one more specific on the North Fairfield road widening. Do you, and this might be a question for the applicant, do you foresee any issues with getting heavy equipment to the sites with the road widening and the timing of that?
You know, that's, again, that, that due to our coordination, no, absolutely not. We, they're, they're going to keep everything open for us.
Yep.
And I talked to, who's?
Nick.
Nick, Nick. He did a good, I talked to him today and we'll keep their schedule, they'll keep ours. And if we have, say, large trusses coming, we'll let you guys know, the contractor know, so he can make provisions. And if they have something heavy coming, they'll let us know. So I really don't see any problem there. That's a good question, though.
Thank you. One for staff. The applicant mentioned construction occurring between 7:00 and, 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. With that being in there, I guess issuance to you guys, do you want, is your opinion that we should have that as a condition in here or do you, do you think we just?
Yeah, I, I think it would be best if we just have it in writing. So I, like I said, staff would be welcome to a condition for that.
Okay. Thank you. That was all my questions.
Great.
Don't run off. I'd be terribly remiss if I didn't have a few questions. The, does staff don't have any problem with that little bit of driveway that's off-site? It probably, is that part of the school property or what?
Yeah, so it's, it's not on their property, but yeah, I believe it's, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, we did a, we had to do a lot of research during the, during the time period of determining, you know, about the relocation of the right-of-way and all the things that are included within this space that we had to work out with the engineering department. And what we found was there is, there is a drawing for that. And it was, it was, I think it's an easement, if I, if I remember correctly. I think it's an easement that's, that's recorded at the county. And so that is for our use and will always be there for our use.
If it's an easement, we're good.
Yeah.
I just wanted to kind of foot stomp that.
Yeah, we were kind of concerned about that. They were with costs and everything else, but, but when we found it, yeah, it was, it was all good.
Don't run off. I think I got a couple of questions for you. The blue siding material that's going to show from the Fairfield roadside, what is that material?
Okay. We're looking at, because of budget, we're looking at two different materials. One is, is called aluminum composite material. And you'll see that sometimes, well, a good example is at the, the Children's Hospital. If you've seen the Children's Hospital, it has a metallic finish to it.
Yes.
And we wanted to use like four different colors of blue for that. We haven't made the final selections of that yet. But it's either that or there's another metal panel that we were looking at using that is, I think is much less expensive, but it would be a metallic finish as well.
Rick's going to get his, he's going to get his licks in here.
But, but stay here, stay here. I would say that we are going to go as far as we can to make this place look really nice.
Oh, no question about that.
So what he's talking about, when you see, you hear metal panel, kind of, this is going to be nice.
It looks, it looks good. The, the metal paneling on the backside won't show except for church members anyway, so.
Right. And, and that front panel, I mean, that, that's a high architectural finish that's on that.
That's very attractive. It's very attractive. I was just curious as to what you were using. And you're not planning any HV, the new HVAC equipment will not be on the roof, is that correct?
Now, in the new part, it will not be on the roof.
Okay.
Where we're going to be replacing, it's going to be replaced right where it is right now and it's already screened.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
You, you, you answered my question.
Okay.
And this is, the way I'm looking at it, and this, this goes to the, the handicap parking, it appears that there are actually two entrances to the sanctuary. One from the upper level that will get you into the balcony and then one from the right side of the lower level.
Yes.
The, the main, the main level of the sanctuary, if you.
Yeah.
So you, you would have handicap spaces near both entrances?
Right.
Both for the folks that want to come in and either sit in the balcony or go down to the lower level or go straight, straight into the lower level or the, I'm sorry, the main level.
Yeah.
Of the sanctuary.
And actually, the east side lends itself to a, to a nice drop-off for people that are struggling. The car comes right up there now that we have a complete 360.
Okay, that, that's the way I thought it looked and I just wanted to, to make sure that I was reading that correctly.
Yeah, and one other thing, too, if I could add, there is an elevator in the building.
Thank you.
And it's down right between the center section and the, and the 2004, right there where he just pointed, or.
You're, you're, you're reading my mind.
Okay.
I, I was going to, I thought there was an elevator, but I wasn't sure. And, staff, you have no problem with setting either, obviously, those, those building-mounted lights are going to shine down onto the parking lot, but they will be shielded? Do we have anything in there about going down to 25% lighting, you know, two hours afterwards like we do for a lot of our facilities that are near a?
Yeah, I, I believe my condition regarding the photometric plan would encompass that, so.
Okay, good, good.
Chair, I'd also say that, that was a concern last night at the open house. We're, we're going to even look into motion sensors. Fact is, it stays light so long during one season, it's dark so early. If not, we'll have a time, we'll, we'll reduce the lights as best as possible, but still maintain safety and security.
Understood, thank you. Yeah, going to be some startled deer, I think. For our engineer, I know this is, this was a concern. That little drainage creek, which way does it flow? It seems to me it flows east.
It flows east and eventually matches up with the, the little Beaver Creek is where it flows to.
So, I, I know that, and I think this was brought out, that when any development takes place on a parcel, it cannot exacerbate an existing condition. So, and you're feeling that, well, I'm, I'm leading the witness.
Sure.
How do you feel that the, the additional parking and the additional footprint of the building is going to affect the flow of that little creek?
Sure, you know, just, it's already been mentioned, it's a FEMA-studied stream, so there's a very substantial amount of acreage attributable to that stream that contributes to those flows. As far as like looking at this site in particular, and what they're doing with the expansion, our stormwater ordinance wouldn't require any additional measures until they exceed one acre of disturbance. And when we checked it, it didn't exceed one acre, but I'm happy to double-check that, but.
Okay.
And for what it's worth, our requirement and our ordinance parallels what's in the Ohio EPA stormwater permit. So, the two of those both say one acre or more, so.
Okay, fine, thank you. I'm out of questions. Gentlemen, any second helpings? Okay, then I, I need a motion.
Motion to add an eighth condition?
Okay.
Well, do we need a motion to? Okay, is that the next, okay, motion to add an eighth condition pertaining to construction hours happening between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM?
And I second that motion. Okay, I have a motion and a second, and we'll say by, gentlemen, how, how say you?
We want that only to apply to exterior work, correct?
Yes, yes, thank you, to exterior work.
I bet Melissa got that. Shall, shall we do that by, by general consensus? Gentlemen, everybody in favor of that? Okay? So, we now have, now we need a motion on the resolution. And for our, our lawyer guy, just to footstomp this, we do not send this on to council. Conditional use lives or dies with planning commission, is that correct?
Yes, there is a way for people to appeal that, but
Correct.
That's the only way.
Yeah, but it, this is not one of the things where we are recommending. We are
Correct, there's not, it's not a recommendation.
Got it.
It's the decision.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that, because that's one of those little anomalies in the planning commission where we do have what I would term a legislative effect. Okay, so, with that, I need a, I need a motion, gentlemen?
Motion to approve PC 25-3 conditional use for Mosaic Church with the eight attached conditions.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second.
And I have a second. Now, we'll read the roll.
Mr. Francis?
Approve.
Mr. Jones?
Approved.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Fountain?
Approve.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries 5-0, and we're looking forward to seeing the new church. And as an old United Methodist, you, you, a very old United Methodist, it's interesting